Center is, as part of our normal programs each year, each summer, we already offer a day camp program for four months out of the year with our summer camp program. So under the DHHS guidelines with childcare, because we have offered that this summer already at East Lincoln Community Center and at Howard's Creek Community Center. Now to continue that program with the families that we already have enrolled and to open it up to some additional families. We do have to have a standing agreement between Lincoln County Parks and Recreation and the school system to confirm and to identify Lincoln County Parks and Recreation. As a community-based organization to allow us to continue that program. Lindsay can tell you a little bit more about how I would say successful and effective our summer has gone as far as operating day camp. At those sites, keeping our kids safe, keeping our staff safe and keeping things rolling as close to normal as we could. For the kids that continue to be enrolled in that program. So what this agreement outlines is just a continuance of that program for us to be able to offer that. Obviously with our facility and what's offered, the space that we have there and the staff availability. Right now our capacity will be 25 students. Lindsay, I believe right now has 10 enrolled that are active right now. And then we have space waiting for some additional families to be able to join that. Right now, since our program began in June of this year, we can operate it as normal through the end of September. Operating any past that requires this agreement and this recognition as a community-based organization. So right now there are obviously certain hurdles that have to, have to be taken care of. The first hurdle that we'll run into is we do have some facilities that will be used much like the school system for elections here coming up later this year. So we will have to transport some kids on that side of things, but we'll still be able to offer the day camp program throughout that election process as well. We just won't be able to house those kids at the East Lincoln Community Center during that time with elections using that space. But our biggest thing that, and Lindsay can tell you, and I'm, I'm going to let her tell you about how they have operated here throughout the summer and how they will continue to operate this program. But everything that they've done this summer has been by the CDC guidelines and in conjunction with our health director here in Lincoln County. And their recommendations on how they would like to see that operated. So Lindsay, do you want to tell them a little bit? I'll let you tell them a little bit more.
I'm not the public speaker. Our day is basically a 10-hour day. All summer long, we've had 25 children at our East Lincoln site and then we've had 15 at our Howard's Creek site. So everyone's coming in the morning, had a temperature check. We've been able to be lucky and work with Shelley through the child nutrition to get our lunches and our breakfast every day for them. And the parents have really appreciated that. But now that we're switching over from field trips and fun all day, we're moving towards the morning. We get them all in their group classroom, get them started for the day, they work a couple hours till they're finished. We have lunch, which is still provided by the school. We go to East Lincoln High School and pick that up. And then they have recreation in the afternoon. We started letting them bring their bicycles. So we're seeing children that have sat for months, working and playing and sweating and having fun. And so that's, you know, been a big thing for us. The parents have appreciated when they picked up that the kids have finished all their work during the day. So they're not going home after mom's worked all day, trying to get that schoolwork finished in the evening and the fuss and the tired and that kind of thing. So it's, it's worked out really well and we've had a lot of good feedback.
And like Lindsay mentioned, throughout that process, we've been pleased with our staff's ability to adapt to the situation. And for the kids not to see those drastic changes. So they didn't run into the hurdles of, we can do this and we can't do that. We try to keep things as, as normal as possible through, through the programs, especially for the kids who have been coming to camp there. Since they were in kindergarten throughout this process. So right now, just some of the other basic details. As Lindsay mentioned, we've got scheduled time in each morning for remote learning and access for the students there. Breaking for lunch and then kind of that free and recreation time throughout that afternoon. The cost weekly for new registrants is a hundred dollars for the week and eighty dollars for our returning summer campus. And we do have scholarship opportunities through our program there if we do have a family that has a financial need there that we can, we can assist with that. So, and right now, like I mentioned, the, the capacity for camp is 25 students. And we've got the capability of housing kids there and then having kids enrolled in that program K through eight in those groups there. So as we mentioned again, as you'll see there in the agreement, we are, we're not here seeking funding, facilities, staffing, those kinds of things. All of that is being, is part of the program that we're already offering and hope to continue to offer.
So John, does that mean you have space for 15 more students? Like you said, you have 10 already rolled in there for summer camp.
Yes, ma'am.
15 more families or students.
Yes, ma'am.
And John, just to reiterate too, this, as you said at the end, this is not asking for us for any financial. You think this is just an opportunity to let us know what you're doing for our students in the county and that you're hosting it off-site, but it's just keeping us informed?
Yes, sir.
Also, is there any other sites to be opened?
Not at this time with, with our summer day camp program. The, I would say Lindsay, what, 75% of staff, 75% of the staff that we use during the summer are school teachers, school assistants, bus drivers and college students. So as school has started back, that has a drastic impact on the availability of our staff. So the staff that we have remaining allows us to operate that one site at this point.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, comments?
Yeah, I was beginning, I just wanted to say, I do, probably earlier, just how much this community has stepped up and helped in this time and I just appreciate being a part during that.
Not a problem at all?
Yeah, appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you. At this time of coming up with flood damage update, providing us flood damage at schools.
Yes, sir. Mr. Jenkins, I've asked Mr. Acre and Mr. Putnam to come up here and discuss with you the, the details of two damages, two, two, two school property damages to, at our recent flood. So I'll turn it over to Eric to start us off and he's going to talk about, we have GE Massey and Lincoln High School that I think y'all.
I'll just briefly go over, if you, as you've got your packs, we've got a blue sheet that kind of explains a little bit about what happened. Of course, you know, the first Friday that schools started, we had flash flood warnings, had some issues at two different locations. Lincoln High School being one, we had flooding take place in the band room. We also had flooding in the classroom. Through the secondary halls between the gym and the actual weight room as well. Pretty extensive damage at that particular school. Right now, we're going to have to replace carpet, have to go in, do a little bit of sheet rock work, some additional paintings, new cobase around those areas as well. We are still determining whether the band room and equipment storages were damaged due to the water. Don't know that as of right now. It seems to be that we're going to be able to reuse that, also not have to replace. And at GE Massey, minimal damage there. Did have a lot of water again come through, but at GE Massey, because it's basically all brick, hard surface and mortar. No sheet rock damage, just had to get a good bit of water up, just to bring the board up to date with our insurance. All of our schools are covered under insurance with Liberty. We have $25,000 deductibles due to flood insurance. However, Lincoln High School is in, considered being a flood zone. So with that being said, we actually have a, an additional rider on our policy with Axis. That it, that actual deductible for that facility is going to be at $50,000. We did have to call in two water mitigation companies to go through the process. And kind of help clean up, because we had two different sites going at one time. Serpro performed those services at Lincoln High School and then we also had a river restoration performance services at GE Massey. We did, when they arrived on site, work with them to get an NT, which is a, basically it's a, will not exceed estimate as quick as possible. So that can give us some feedback as they were going through the work. I'd be glad to answer any questions if you have them. If not, I'll turn it over to Randy to kind of talk through how the water did breach the, the building.
Randy, can I talk about the steps we're taking to prevent that in the future? Is that what?
Over at Lincoln High School, the issues we had over there, there was a, I think, four or five storm drains. That had, with all the water that came down off across Aspen Street and down through there, from the grass being cut and mulched into areas and things like that. It washed over the storm drains. So the drains were able to hold the water, but it's just, it came so fast. I think, I don't know what the official report was, but we had like four and a half inches of water and maybe an hour, less than an hour, a little over an hour or something like that. And it just came down and those drains stopped up. So that let it build up over sidewalks and running under the doors. GE Massey, we replaced a water line out there over the summer. So we went back to make sure there weren't anything done, put in too much dirt or anything over there and it was fine. But we've been having some issues when we have a, a heavy rain, such as we had on Friday. The water in the hallway, it runs through between the old buildings, the two old buildings and where the new building was added on. It runs right down through there, across the sidewalk, right down through here and runs right up into that building. So we're going to go in, me and Dr. Allen had met over there and walked it through. And so in the next couple of weeks or so, we're getting, I had to get a sit with an engineer out there and everything, take a look at everything. We're going to grade those down and move those storm drains to the center between the two buildings and then put a file from both sides of where the water runs to the middle. There's enough, the pipe is big enough to handle the water if we just get it going in the right direction. So hopefully we can take, we can do that. Over at Lincoln High School, it was, it was more or less, it's just a timing. Rain come, grass been mowed, mulched and everything out there and it just, you know, it come from every direction and everything. So hopefully we'll, we'll keep a better eye on that with the school personnel and so then they can, you know, let the maintenance know if they have issues too. So I think that, that all of it could be preventable. It's just going to take a little bit of work to make sure, you know, the next time this happens or it rains like that, we won't have the same issue.
Yes, just trying to answer your question too.
To answer your question too, we, we communicate as best we can when we're looking at weather situations. Dr. Allen sends it out as well as myself to check storm drains, outside drains, anytime we see bad weather coming. In this situation, we have communicated that with the schools again, that how important it is for us to go back and walk our properties and make sure storm drains aren't blocked. Our downspouts are not blocked and everything is flowing freely. So that's something that we are going to continue to put in place as we go through.
I will say too, so Pam and Erica followed up with the insurance company too, to make sure that this case can stay open. For those six month, eight month, a year from now, issues that may creep up specifically regarding the gym floor. Because it did go through the gym doors as well. So the case won't be closed. Our deductible will still maintain where it is. And so down the road, if we see that we have to do something to the gym floor that's due to this, then it can be applied to the insurance as well.
At what point was, was the school added into a flood plain? Because I saw it on the current map being, it's in an X, it's not in a.
Mark, I pulled something off and I, and I failed to give it into the D packet, but there's a flood plain that wraps kind of around Lincoln High School. If you look, is that what you're looking at right now? The only part of that flood plain actually that touches, if you look at, if you're looking at what I think you are on GSI, it goes in our bus parking lot, just one little section there.
But when I spoke with Liberty about this, it is not that we're in a flood plain. They consider that a flood zone. And Liberty would not give us the insurance at a lower deductible. They basically, at the time that the cost was looked at, they were going to give us a deductible of $2 million to cover a maximum of a $5 million incident. And so that's when they went out and found a secondary, I guess it's a rider. And Axis is the company that they wrote the, and it's under the National Flood Program Insurance. That's the person that has this current insurance with us for floods and it's a $50,000 deductible.
I would just argue with my wife, because I don't believe it's not in a flood zone. The frame of rules, their map and the building's actually located, even if there's a flood zone, the project building's not located, it's in the flood zone. It's actually, of course, they're all, it's almost located within a X zone and there should be some, there are only.
Okay.
To worth asking questions.
All right, I'll contact Sandy in the morning.
Their maps would have been updated in the last couple of years.
I'll contact Sandy in the morning and ask for that.
Right now, just to, just so everybody's kind of doing the math, right out, right off the bat, we're on the hook for $75,000 we did plan on using. And so luckily at $50,000 deductible for Lincoln and 25 for Massey, due to the nature of the event. And, and we tried to argue, I'll say that, we tried to debate that upfront. So that's luckily we're, we're setting that, we're using that money from the Quartercent True Up. So that's a good positive thing that we have Quartercent True Up to take care of the unexpected issues like this that just happened. But anything above and beyond that, I'm making sure it should take care of it. Just that's why that will be a change in our capital plan and our, and our expenditures that we report to the commissioners.
Any questions?
Appreciate y'all taking care of that.
Thank you.
I see the next item up is the Return to Play 2021.
Good evening, board members. If you would, I get the handout that I gave you, it was in your packet. This is the calendar, athletic calendar adopted by the New York High School Athletic Association. And you'll notice that the first two sports that get to play is volleyball and cross country. And that gets to start November the 4th. However, they get a train, they get to train eight weeks before the first practice date. So that will be September the 9th that they'll actually get to start training and working on volleyball and cross country. With swimming, we'll get to start November 23rd and their training day will be September the 28th. So those three sports get to start pretty soon. As far as we are allowing different sports to still keep lifting. But the priority sports have access to that before the secondary sports. The athletic directors are making sure that's very organized. And so far, you know, volleyball and cross country and swim, they're not participating in the actual lifting part of it, okay?
But they are practicing, Brian?
Not, no, not yet. Not till September the 9th.
Volleyball is not practicing?
No, they should not be practicing now. They were, everybody was conditioning, but after the dead period, they have, they have some time off. And then so November the 4th is the first practice day and then eight weeks before that is actual training time. And that would be September the 9th when they get to actually start.
Okay, thank you.
And I'll keep going down. Basketball starts December the 7th. Their actual training would start October the 12th. Men's soccer would start January the 11th and their training day will start November the 16th. Practice for football would start, their first day is February the 8th. And their training day would be December the 14th. And then practice that starts March the 1st would be for men's and women's golf, women's soccer, softball and men's tennis. And their actual training date would start January the 4th. Men's tennis is going to be super tough this year, starting January 4th as far as training goes. And then April the 12th, baseball, women's tennis, track and field and wrestling will start April the 12th and their training date will be February the 15th. Any questions with that?
What does the Athletic Association put out with regards to football, these door rolls? Because normally you need to have 10 days of practice before you can get, before contact. And with those sports where, since you reversed it, you know, basketball, they have it, well, without, kids play basketball, we're going to move into football. Are they giving any guidance as to how they're going to?
They have not given any guidance. I know we have a roundtable discussions Thursday with all the ADs across the state. They have not discussed that. We've, we're used to overlapping, but we're not used to this kind of overlapping. Because you're right, you got to have the 10 days after basketball season with, before they can pad up and hit.
Or will they consider that training possibly this year?
We're hoping, but that has not been discussed.
And Mark, there's also regional meetings that bring together all the districts, leagues that are coming up the 21st of September or something. When they first start. So we might, you know, there's another opportunity to get some information and guidance from them there too.
We're just excited that, that we have a calendar and we'll be able to play. Any more questions? I'll be talking about middle school next on the 8th. Yeah, we're working on that pretty hard too.
Any other questions or comments?
This is our high school local plan, so it doesn't need approval since it is an action item.
With the notion that this is a living document with the idea that based on governor's remarks, this could change and ebb and flow based on our phase two, three, whatever we're in.
And any other high school association guidelines?
And our conference.
Yeah, any conference agreements you can come to.
Okay, it's time I ask for a motion. Second, second, all in favor?
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, this concludes the building and site.
Thanks, Mr. Jenkins. Next we'll turn it over to Ms. Moore for the motion finance committee.
I make the motion.
Ms. Avery, what was that motion for?
Please a minute.
Mr. Iverson, second. All the favors second public say aye. Close. If you have the Quartercent sales back something.
Good afternoon, board members. You have in your packet some detailed information that regarding our Quartercent True Up. You have in your packet some detailed information that regarding our Quartercent true up from fiscal year 1920. As you can see, we, on October the 25th, we did receive our true up, which was $782,754.81. And on the distribution list, you'll see that I have distributed out the portion, that is the charter schools portion. And then down at the bottom, we met with Randy and Stephen regarding how we needed to distribute that, those funds. As you see, we have the funding there for the flooding repairs of $75,000. Stephen is requesting additional technology, additional learning, money for $175,000. And the rest is to be allocated to maintenance for some massive HVAC issues that he's having right now and of course some other emergencies, again, like the flooding issue, see that we have that is just out of our control. I'd be glad to entertain any kind of questions you have or do, you know, do anything you have for me at this time.
Thank you.
Is it nice to talk with this? Very needed that numbers came in higher than everybody is just saying, good news.
We have the child nutrition waiver.
Good afternoon. And as you all know, when school closed in March, the USDA issued waivers which allow child nutrition programs to feed all students free meals, all children 18 years and younger, free meals and to serve those meals in non-congregate settings. From March until August, we operated anywhere from eight to six sites and provided meals seven days a week. As of yesterday, we've served 740,140 meals. We feel very fortunate to be able to serve our community during this time of need and uncertainty. And always, I'm super proud of my folks for stepping up to the challenge to serve the kids. With that being said, we were told that it did not look promising that the USDA would extend our waiver past August 31st and that we should prepare to revert back to the national school lunch program. However, we were beyond ecstatic that show morning around 10:30, when we received the news that the USDA had decided to extend our waivers until December 31st, 2020. This informational agenda item was originally set to discuss the transition from our waiver to the national school lunch program, but with the last minute approval, I am pleased just to be able to give you a general update of what we have going on. Operationally, with the waiver extension, we will continue as we have been since the start of school, with all children receiving free meals and serving our grab and go meal bundles on Wednesdays. We are obviously serving fewer meals than if we were at full capacity, but we do serve a great deal of meals on our grab and go Wednesdays, which help to subsidize the gap. Our staffing looks a bit different this year due to all the changes. We currently have 15 vacancies out of 106 positions, which we are not intending to fill at this point. We're also shuffling staff to different locations based on the most need. So right now, we're just moving forward and adapting as we go. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Now, the 15 staff, shortly, what is that, what's caused it?
It's just folks that have resigned or left their position or retired. So we have those 15 vacancies out of 106 employees, we're just not filling them right now.
Okay, okay.
Just to conserve resources.
I got you.
Thank you for all you and your staff have done to, to be our meeting.
I'm sorry, what'd you say?
So just thank you for all you and your staff have done to be our meeting.
Yes.
Thank you, I, I, it's been a pleasure and of course, I've got many, many wonderful folks that have been on the front lines to do that. And of course, I've been guided by these great folks here, so.
Thank you, Ms. Maum. Now I'll turn it over to Ms. Ryan for the equipment committee.
Thank you, Mr. Wolfers. I will recognize my committee member, Ms. Herbertson, and Ms. Avery, and we'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from June 2nd, 2020, and July 14th, 2020.
I make the motion.
Motion, Ms. Avery? Second, all in favor? Next, we will, we have one action item to approve on, the school calendar revision. Turn that over to Claire.
Yes, sir, we'd like to make a, a change to the 2020-21 school calendar. We'd like to move the parent teacher conference from Tuesday, September 29th to Wednesday, September the 30th. The advantage of this is the students will get a full day of classroom instruction and the teachers would be able to do the parent teacher conferences on a remote learning day.
That was originally a half day.
Yes, ma'am.
Right, the 29th was?
Yes, ma'am, 29th was originally a half day. So now the kids will get a full, you know, classroom instruction, full day of classroom instruction.
Any questions on that? I would entertain a motion to approve that. Motion from Mr. Herbertson, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Avery, all in favor? Ms. Ryan, before we do multiple next item, with the board's permission, I typically send out a parent conference memo to the principals that they share with their staff that guides them with the expectations and planning. And in, in order to do that, I'd like to send that out tomorrow to give them an extra week since we're making this date change opposed to waiting until having this, when it's officially approved, the 8th, and then sending that out the 9th. Is that okay with the board? I think we just can have consensus on that, is everybody?
Yeah.
Right, but if I can have consensus, then I can send that out. That gives the schools one more week to just plan to contact parents to set up those days.
Yeah.
Thank you. Ms. Avery and Ms. Davis, need comment there?
I'm in agreement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have special populations update, Dr. Heltzer.
Yes, ma'am, good afternoon, board members. I would like to just take a few moments this afternoon and share with you some updates from the teaching and learning side of things in our classrooms. And of course, just to provide some perspective, we haven't had students in our building since March. So it was certainly exciting, exciting to have students back in our, in our classrooms and our teachers visiting the students and getting them caught up. And just, it was, it was a good feeling in our buildings. And I know that as you talk with teachers and experience that as well. So I thought it was important that we take some time just to share with you, now that we have worked out our Plan B and the blended learning format for all of our students to focus on some of the things that are also equally important. And that's what's going along with some of our special populations. And we're going to go through just a few of those items. But before we do that, just some important things that we've been working on and have been seeing in our classrooms and looking for as we go into classrooms and have been sharing with our teachers from the instructional side within instructional services. And as you have conversations with teachers, some things that you can listen for as well. One thing is standards alignment, making sure that the standards that are being taught and that are in the lessons explicitly address new content, but also go back and fill in any gaps of previous content. So as you're having those conversations or looking at, even myself, when I'm looking at my, my own students work, that's one thing that I'm looking for, is to make sure that that's spiraling and addressing some of those gaps that may have taken place. One thing that also we're looking at, this has been a little bit challenging, is the lesson design. I know that it's, it's blended and it's new for our teachers. And you may have heard some of that, having to prepare for both face-to-face instruction, but then also remote instruction. And so that's a very kind of different lesson design. So we're looking for evidence that really shows that there's a gradual release of the learning for the students, that the, the I do or the teacher models that, the we do, where they're working on that together. And then where they, you do, where they're doing that on their own. And really looking to make sure that those Wednesday planned days are productive, that they're collaborating, they're working together, designing lessons together so that they're sharing some of that workload. What we're seeing the greatest challenges are where there's not, there's limited collaboration. So naturally, the more collaboration that's in place, the sharing of resources, the sharing of the lessons and the activities that they're planning for, for the digital content, it does make it a lot more effective for the classroom teacher. And then really maximizing that face-to-face time, because we know that they're only there for those two days face-to-face. So when they are there, making sure that there's not a lot of fluff, that they're really getting down to business during that time. Now, the first week or so, obviously, we were working through a lot of technical details. And so naturally, that takes some time to work through. And even now, with our youngest learners particularly, they, they may have only logged into Google Classroom or had, have been instructed on how to do that for two days. So there's still some things to work through with that, but really maximizing that time. And so as we're looking at then, with, along with the curriculum, but also just the instructional side and making sure that the instruction is focused, again, that there's not a lot of fluff and that the volume of the student work is adequate. And that should start picking up now as we enter into work three, or week three. Because as you think about, have only been there for a, at the most really two days and now maybe the third day face-to-face for some of our learners. So now it should start to really intensify as far as some of that workload goes and monitoring that volume. And then, one thing that Rusty will talk about in just a little bit is some of the accountability and the accountability model, so making sure that we're able to assess and monitor the readiness of our learners so that the work that they're getting is also differentiated to what their learning needs may be. And that's one reason why with our special populations, really taking a look at, you know, our academically gifted students, making sure that they're not, that they're being challenged. They're making sure that our E.C. students are getting adequate services that they need, making sure that our English language learners are getting what they need. So certainly looking at the readiness of our students. And then just continuing to monitor that attendance, we'll start really emphasizing that principals and social workers start to follow up with students that they have not heard from and that anybody that maybe has dropped out or that we've not had contact with, we make sure that we make that connection and share with them their options and their opportunities.
Dr. Heltzer, excuse me, what is that number at currently?
Our current no-shows?
Yes.
Um, I don't know that. Seventy-six, the status.
Okay, well, that's, that's a long way from the hundred, I think it was 100 and something, 160?
So obviously continuing to track down those 76 and making sure that we connect with them and find out where they're at or what's happening with them.
Okay.
And then, of course, also looking at instructional engagement, making sure that, that the schedule within our, within all of our schools, that our high school schedules are maximized and then our elementary school schedules as far as their special areas and all those, those things that matter for them as well are emphasized. And making sure finally that even as it comes to instructional engagement, that we're also able to engage the family with that instruction so that the family, the mom or dad or whoever's working with them know how to access the online management system and work through some of those details with assistance by the teacher if need be. So those are some of the things that we're emphasizing just for all of our students. Some of the important things we're looking for as we really now enter into what I would consider more of the, now we've got some of the management details worked through and some of the operational things with reopening, really looking at now the teaching and learning that's going on. Before I ask Ms. Davis to come up and share some specific things related to exceptional childrens, are there any questions for me about just the, the general instructional side for Plan B and blended learning?
So if you see. I'll just say on the offhand note, everybody feels the same way. I think thanking to, to you guys and to, and to our teachers who are. Have, have figured this whole thing out once again, so.
Good afternoon and thank you for the opportunity to provide you with an update regarding services for our E.C. students, as well as an overview of procedures in reference to implementation of current policy in light of COVID-19. As you're aware, the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act has not been amended. The U.S. Department of Education suggested revisions early, but no recommended changes were offered to Congress. Therefore, in regards to federal regulations and state policies, there have been no changes. Our child fund and evaluation timeline requirements are still intact. You will see under evaluations that we had approximately 93 evaluations roll over from last spring, 60 of which were initial referrals. Also, under students transitioning from Plan C to Plan B, infant toddler services to preschool services, we had approximately 48 students. So our evaluation teams have hit the ground running to try to avoid any additional missed timelines as well to get a jumpstart as we progress in the year. We will have additional evaluations coming due. So we're trying to really jumpstart that and get as many taken care of as possible. In reference to IEP's regulations, we'll try the IEP to be in effect at the beginning of the school year as well as the services that are documented on the IEP reflective of what is being provided. So based on that information, you can see that that has kind of put us in a place where we are having to have additional IEP meetings. So across the district, our E.C. teachers are having the IEP meetings with families to develop what's called a remote learning contingency plan. And basically, a remote learning contingency plan spells out when, where and how services will be delivered to students during a school closure or when in-person instruction is not an option. In development of the plans, we are going ahead and developing a plan for Phase B as well as Phase C. So students will have their IEP, which is in place for a normal school schedule. They'll have a remote learning contingency plan that will reflect what services will look like under Plan or Phase B as well as Phase C. By going ahead and developing a plan for B and C, it will avoid teachers having to go back and hold additional IEP meetings under the circumstance that an individual school or the district would have to make a transition from C to C or C to B. By going ahead and discussing that at the IEP meetings that we are currently having, they will have the services in place, everybody will be aware of what that will look like. And teachers will just need to follow up with parents with a prior notice documenting the reason for the transition as well as a copy of the plan. I have asked teachers to prioritize these meetings. I will tell you as, as a teacher to think that, oh my goodness, you know, my caseload and now I'm about to have meetings for, for all of these students. You know, in addition to, they're being expected to plan instruction for 100% most students as well as, you know, different cohorts, that in-person instruction. So I have asked them to prioritize and to look at those students first who are following 100% remote or those students whose services are drastically different from what they are, on the IEP, from what they are currently receiving. It is our goal to provide services that are reflective of what is documented on the IEP to the greatest extent possible. We are also currently providing additional days of in-person instruction for our most intensive need students. A checklist of learning needs and factors to consider was developed from the E.C. department and shared with teachers to use as a framework for the IEP to have discussions around determining if additional in-person days are needed for that student to make educational benefit. In closing, the E.C. department has allocated funding to schools for additional instructional supplies and materials needed as a result of remote instruction as well as the need to decrease sharing of materials. We are also currently looking to provide additional instructional programs with online components to support our specially designed instruction. Any questions?
Questions for Ms. Davis?
And Rusty Sane is going to come and share with our English language learners. As he comes up, I will say that with our exceptional childrens, obviously, you can see that that is a massive workload on our E.C. teachers. And they have been doing a fantastic job just working through that despite all of the regulations and all those things that go with that. So I know that they certainly appreciate all the support that we can give as a district and for all of you as board members as well, certainly appreciate that. So Rusty's going to talk to us about our English language learners.
So currently, our, our head count is around 360 students. Serving those students are seven teachers along with two TAs. If you do the math, that ratio is pretty high, so at least. Uh, so at least a lot of challenges of, of meeting the needs of students. Uh, at the beginning of school, and this year is no different than any other, other year, we have to focus on newcomers coming in and testing those, screening those students to see if they qualify for EL services or not. The problem is we have a lot that, uh, may be remote learners, so we can't give them a test offsite. Uh, we do that through an interview process. And then once we go back to full school, those students will be, uh, given the WAPT test, the screener test when they come in too. So we can go ahead and start services based off an interview, uh, but right now we can't test offsite. Uh, the students who are in the building, we're giving those tests right now. Our teachers are working on their scheduling, uh, making the rounds to several schools. And that's, that's probably been, and working on their EL plans and then getting out test scores from last year for access testing, uh, to the, to the current students who are in the building. Uh, our plan follows primarily like we have done every year. Uh, we'll pull students out of the classroom and serve them where we can. We'll work with them at consultative, uh, if they, if their, uh, access scores are high enough to do that. Uh, we push in where we can, uh, into a regular classroom. Uh, again, the challenging part is because our staff is spread out across the county. We may, a teacher may choose to do a, a virtual classroom with those students in the building where I'm sitting at Pumpkin Center. But I have students at, uh, Iron Station or GE Massey. And the teacher allows them to go on the computer and they do an in-session class while they're in the building. Uh, students who are remote, we, we do have the program Imagine Learning, which works on the English language, or English, uh, language. Uh, that's given in the building as well as for remote learners. Uh, plus we're doing the phone calls to follow up, uh, emails. Uh, we've had to do house visits, uh, just to check in and make sure students are, uh, logging in or, uh, understanding what Plan C really looks like. Um, again, the virtual classrooms, paper packets, because a lot of our students don't have internet access. And through our ESL Center, uh, a lot of their time has been spent, uh, on enrollments. Again, following up with parents, uh, to, to check for understanding whether it's classroom assignments that have been sent home or actually have to log into a classroom with their remote. Um, and basically just checking for understanding, uh, with those parents and students. And also translations, uh, whether it's, uh, sitting in on IEP meeting with the EC team or paperwork that we have them to do. Uh, currently, teachers are working again for our EL plans and skipping classes and testing students. Uh, really, that's no different than the beginning of each year. The difference is going to be, uh, moving into this week and next week, we have more students in the building. In fact, again, pull those students and see what they want to look like.
Any questions? Mr. Sane?
Uh, Mr. Josh Sane is going to share with our academically gifted. And of course, as he comes up with our English language learners, um, naturally, the communication barrier is a challenge with that, particularly with remote. And so our ESL Center has been really doing a lot of work to connect with those families. And I will say that, um, that demographic group, the Hispanic population, is also one that seems that with the remote learning, um, there's a lot of concern with the return to, to school face to face in that community. So we've had to work through some of that and may have heard some of that in the community as well as you've talked to principals and different community members that we certainly have been working through and addressing those and appreciate, uh, Mr. Sane and his, um, staff within the ESL Center to help facilitate that process. Josh is going to talk to us a little bit about our academically gifted program.
Good evening, everyone. Um, so I'm going to start with elementary. Uh, at the end of last year, our spring head count, we had two hundred and eighty-two students who identified as gifted. Um, and then just moving into how we began implementing services this year, from August seventeenth through the twenty-fourth, our AIG teachers have finalized last year's testing and communicated with our gifted parents, um, the plan, our service delivery plan that we devised under Plan B. Um, and in order to devise that plan, all eight of our elementary AIG teachers attended three day-long PD sessions here at the central office so that we can ensure that our service delivery is consistent and aligned with classroom instruction. Dr. Belcher referenced this earlier, but, uh, we really want to make sure that our instruction is aligned. Um, and that also, um, is for our gifted learners as well, especially since they're only in school two days a week, we didn't want them to be pulled out or have assignments that were not relevant or rigorous in terms of their classroom or their grade level, um, standards. So our plan actually consists of two virtual learning sessions per week, per area of identification. That is consistent with our traditional service delivery program. Students who are gifted in reading would receive two face-to-face sessions. And gifted in math would receive two as well. So they are still receiving those sessions that are virtual. In addition to those two sessions, our AIG teachers are meeting with students once per week face to face to address the learning, the virtual learning, and to hold students accountable and ensure that their classroom learning is aligned. Um, we created that plan out of the guidance from DPI that it is a different context, but with same expectation. Uh, I'm very proud of our AIG teachers because our service delivery program under Plan B is actually newer, um, than what, than the service delivery they would face to face. So our AIG teachers are going above and beyond to ensure that those elementary students are getting the enrichment that they, they deserve. As far as our nurturing program, it will not begin until the first of October. We are currently working, uh, to, to develop that nurturing plan. Uh, but it will be a version, uh, similar with its hybrid and face-to-face, uh, instruction. And we'll be utilizing some of the NCTPI tools that they have released to us, which are virtual learning labs, and that will assist us with the nurturing process. For middle school, we ended last year at four hundred and eleven students identified as gifted. Um, and we finalized our twenty nineteen and twenty twenty screening process last week. We were able to test about forty-one students over the summer for our advanced math classes. Um, we didn't have any for advanced CLA. And we also tested a couple of students for identification purposes, so. So those classes are still, they're following the same format as our, our traditional classrooms with advanced CLA and advanced math, uh, with hybrid and face-to-face, or hybrid of face-to-face and virtual learning. Um, and the, the middle school teachers are also utilizing the DPI virtual learning labs as well to assist in their instruction. And with high school, uh, we finished last year at almost six hundred students identified. Um, one thing that is unique to this school year, this is the first year that identified ninth and tenth grade students can take CCP classes, um, if they, if they are academically gifted in both reading and math, and if they meet for additional requirements, uh, from CCP, they can enroll in those courses. And I am happy to say that we have three students who've met those requirements already. And we have another couple in the process, uh, of, of getting approved by Gaston College. So that is our academically gifted services in a nutshell. We'll have any questions?
What are the additional forward requirements?
So approval from, uh, so first of all, they have to get identified in reading and math. Um, then they have to meet a college readiness exam benchmark, which is established by the community college, or it's PSAT, SAT, or ACT. Approval, um, from parents or recommendation from parents and principal of college readiness. And then recommend, recommendation from me, following all of those scores. That then goes to Gaston College where they are processed. And then if Gaston approves them, that sends back to us and they can enroll in the course.
Three seem kind of low. So three seem kind of low based on some of the scores that seem coming out of our schools. Yeah, so.
Are we, is it all online this class?
The specific, specific class schedule for them?
Yes.
They are, and I, so I, yes, three, I think we will see that increase. This was kind of rolled out and came to our attention later in the summer. So, um, we are just now starting to implement this and work through it. I expect the good news for us, in my opinion, this is my own kind of narrative on this, not having a, um, you know, not having a early college or some kind of format within our district. I think that this could, um, provide some benefits for our students that, um, they potentially hadn't had previously regarding the tenth grade CCP courses. Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
All right, and so finally, um, our youngest learners, our pre-K program. Um, of course, they have, um, started coming or are preparing to reopen for them as well. And Mr. Welch is going to share with us some updated information and new information regarding pre-K and reopening for those students.
Uh, good evening, everybody. Um, just real quick, uh, pre-K, if, if you want to brighten your day up, go visit a school and go into a pre-K class. I mean, it's just, it puts a smile on your face, it really does. Uh, real quick enrollment funding, currently, we've got a hundred and sixty-two kids, uh, enrolled in Lincoln County Schools pre-K. Uh, the pre-K program, just so you know, is funded through North Carolina Pre-K, through Title I and through EC funds. Uh, we had a big Brigant screening this summer back in July. Uh, it's usually a little bit earlier, but we had it in July, we had a great turnout. We followed all the protocol calls and everything, but the kids came out. Uh, we were able to give them all the Brigant screening, and that gives us a start point for our pre-K kids. Uh, currently, we have nine classrooms, uh, they're meeting face to face. Uh, we're on the Lincoln County School Plan now. You have your cohort A and B, and they get to go two days a week, and Wednesday's the remote day. Uh, we, we did have an opportunity to set up one virtual class, and it seems to be going very well. I checked in on her today, and she is, uh, doing Google meets with the children because we had some parents that, uh, chose the virtual. And, uh, she's doing a good job working out of GE Massey for us. Um, moving on down to safety and support, uh, pre-K continues to operate under North Carolina Division of Health and Human Services. Uh, we have to follow their guidelines because with daycares and preschools, uh, a big thing that is being offered, um, that I think is going to be beneficial for our teachers with the remote learning is we use a program called Creative Curriculum. And Creative Curriculum is actually offering, uh, staff development for all of our teachers, our North Carolina pre-K teachers, and it's all of our pre-K teachers. Um, it's going to be, uh, two, three-hour sessions that the teachers are going to get to sign up for. Um, and the program that they are going to get to use with Creative Curriculum is called the Cloud. And it's stuff to help them on the remote days to, to provide that, uh, instruction for students at home on the remote days and also for our class that has virtual days. Uh, so we're excited about that and that training is actually taking place now. The teachers sign up online and they're taking that training virtual. Um, and that's all I have.
Any questions, Mr. Welch?
Thank you very much. Thank you.
I have a question, Mr. Welch.
Yes, ma'am.
Will the services like speech, physical therapy be offered to pre-K?
Yeah, we are offering those services right now that, and they, they get those services. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, if there's nothing else on that, I think we're going to be National Arts and Education Week. After that, we can send that.
Yes, ma'am. Coming up, um, beginning September the thirteenth, um, and now go through that week until the nineteenth, is National Arts and Education Week. And, um, you can see in your packet, you have a calendar where I guess an events list of, of all the things that the, um, arts teachers and our arts departments, um, in, in our middle schools and high schools and any other, um, areas that have planned for, for the upcoming year. And of course, we know that, um, this may need to be modified or edited as we continue with, um, operations and what's, what status we have from the governor related to these. But I think it's important that we still provide our students with opportunities for the arts and celebrate the arts. And of course, at a young age, the impact that it has in providing some local, um, entertainment and art appreciation opportunities within our little small town here in Link, in Lincoln and across the county. So you can see those events, I encourage you to, um, attend those if you have the opportunity as we move forward and throughout the school year.
I just want to say thank you for this calendar. It's just awesome to have this so that you can see it sometimes on social media and those are things here and there, but just have it all right here together. Very nice, I thank you for that. Any questions throughout your belter on that or comments?
I just want to add that, um, in supporting those by attending and purchasing a ticket, we, we support those art programs, which, as we all know, um, don't get the funding that they always need, um, from our budget because, um, you know, you know how that is just throughout the year, but, um, but if you can't make it, buy a ticket anyway and to some of these events that they have throughout the year because we have some phenomenal talent in, in our community. And I don't ever want to see any of these programs, um, go backwards or, or be depleted.
Okay, last one, link to the accountability update from Mr. Sane.
So typically, at this point in the year, I'll probably be bringing in the grade and of course, test results to you, which we do not have. Uh, so there's no data to go over from the nineteen-twenty school year. However, I do have some updates. I know there's probably been a lot of question of what's, uh, what's going on with testing? Are there going to be waivers, those types of things? Uh, currently in North Carolina, our first test of the year, and we're unique in North Carolina because a lot of states do not offer a, uh, beginning-of-grade test. We're one of a handful that do that across the United States. So most of the waivers come later in the year, in the spring of the year, if there's going to be anything like that. Uh, so right now, our beginning-of-grade three test is scheduled to be taken within the first twenty days of the school year. Now, that, that seems like a short period, but the days are counted as when the students are in the building. So as of right now, with our students only being in one day a week for each week, currently we're in day two. And then this week will be a day four and so forth. Uh, we will not begin any, beginning of grade testing until probably around the end of September. Uh, I've already held test training with our test coordinators. And if anything changes, we'll have to come back to the table and look at things at that time. For our remote learners, we cannot give tests offsite. Uh, they have to be in the building to test. So what do we do with our remote learners?
That's per the state, right?
That is per the state. Uh, so, and even if you, other LEAs, uh, that surround us, they're totally remote. They did grant us, uh, there is some flexibility to this, uh, that we, we will test those students when they come back into the building. Now, when that will be, is it November, April of next year? At whatever time, right now, the plan is to test those students when they come back. So you can see how crazy.
You know, you're going to train them, you're beginning of the year, when they will test them.
Yeah. So that, that's the way it's set up right now, is, and that's just for the beginning of grade three test. Our next test we have to look at is just our local test, it's through the state's NC check-ins. That's just, you know, we use that for instructional purposes only. That's not the later till October, the window runs from around October to the end of November. That'll be the first check-in, uh, those, that's grades four through eight, Math One and Math Two. Uh, so we have a little bit of time to see if anything changes with that. But as of right now, the calendar's out for those. For end-of-grade and end-of-course test, of course, that happens at the end of the fall, the last five days of the semester for their end-of-course test. And, uh, last ten days of the semester for end-of-grade, or the last ten days of the school year for end-of-grade. So until things changes or we have any changes come down from the state, as of right now, the plan is to test. Uh, I know there's been some, probably some things out there in the media where some, some states have received waivers from testing. Dr. Howard, Dr. Tammy Howard from DPI, uh, told us in our meeting that the only type of, there is no waiver yet. Some states have sent a letter to the U.S. Department of Education asking for a waiver application, but no such thing has been granted at this time. And then one of the, um, Assistant Secretaries from the U.S. Department of Education basically stated that, uh, the likelihood of waivers this year is, is, don't expect them. So again, it's all up in the air at this point. Some other things that have, have changed or added some flexibility is typically we have a ten, twenty-day window to change classes for high school students and year-long classes for end-of-course test. That has been bumped to a thirty, sixty-day window, uh, so we have a little bit more flexibility if there's something that a student needs to change in class, uh, we can work within that. All those have to come through my office and submit to the state if they're going to fall out of that window. Uh, ACTs, uh, we're supposed to go on in the fall with pre-ACT. That window has been extended, extended now until the end of May. So as of right now, we're not going to test pre-ACT in the fall. We're going to look at a spring date when we have everybody in the building that can do it at one time. And also, there were some ACT fall makeups from last year for our eleventh graders who did not get to test. That was supposed to be in the fall of the year, that window. That window has been pushed up to the spring as well. Of course, I talked earlier about the screening test for our EL newcomers. That's currently an interview, but they'll have to be tested once they come back in the building. Our current students are in, we can test them face-to-face. And I think that's it for right now. It changes every day, so...
What about NCIFs there?
NCIFs...
I know last year was supposed to be last year, but...
NCIFs ended last year. So at the high school level, there is no more NCIFs at high school level or the middle school. The only test at high schools now will be your state test, will be your English 2, your biology, Math 1, Math 3.
Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ryan. Now we'll begin the Policy Committee, reading the first item of action, is to approve the June 2nd and July 14th, 2020 minutes.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, call a favor. Our next item is to discuss policy 5030 on community use of facilities.
So, per Ms. Davis's request, we've brought this policy to the committee for discussion. And so with that, Ms. Davis, I'll turn it over to you to kind of set the stage for what you were thinking.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I asked for this to just, for us to be able to just talk about this, because you know, there's, there are some concessions made for sports teams that utilize our facilities for various things, such as a cap of some sort, which I'm not proposing a cap, but I am proposing that we just take a look at some of the cost of facility rentals for, like our dance studios and things of that nature. Now, before anybody just says, "That's ridiculous," I want you to think about some of the folks that participate in dance, grow up to be cheerleaders at our middle schools and our high schools. Some, I think, two, at least two of our high schools now have dance teams, and then there are quite a few from our community that have gone on to participate in cheerleading or dance on the collegiate level. So I'd like for us to at least think about reducing rates for events such as recitals, which don't bring any money into those dance teams. And yes, some of our dance teams do have a nonprofit status for at least part of their operation. I'd also like for us to talk about more of the rental fees that are charged at North Lincoln, staying in the North Lincoln High School budget. Right now, and Erin, I'm not sure if I'm saying this right, but right now, I think, is it 50/50?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Because if you've ever been in one of those facilities and you changed light bulbs or you update anything, it is expensive to do so. So I'm advocating really for two things, for that lesser rental for some of those, of our local dance teams, and then the other thing is perhaps allowing more of the rental fee to get, to stay at the school for, particularly with the auditorium at North Lincoln, to stay there so that it can be utilized for repairs and updates.
And also, part of your packet board, I gave you, the committee, I've given you last year, the four high school rental comparison, so you can kind of see, reminder is, if you are Category 1, it's a school-related activity. Category 2 is a nonprofit category, and then Category 3 is a for-profit category. And you can kind of see the difference there, and really looking at what was used at each site, and by what type of group has used us the most and where. And as Ms. Davis said, at North Lincoln, all for-profits have asked to use the auditorium.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
I know you guys worked extensively on this policy, probably five years ago, maybe, something like that.
Yet.
In this policy, I know you're hard on it. It looks like it's set up not, not, I think it maybe happens this way, but it's not set up, it's set up as a for-profit versus a nonprofit rate. Am I right in that?
The difference is, or the hard part...
Versus a non-athletic type, that's not the situation we've got here. It just so happens that the higher fee is falling on these organizations because they're not nonprofit? Is that what...
I think that is the case, because I mean, if you look at, let's talk about basketball, for example, and you know, some of our AAU teams that use gyms and so forth, and have, you know, for many years, and not saying there's anything wrong with that, but you know, that's an AAU team that can get a nonprofit status, even though, you know, sometimes coaches and assistant coaches and so forth are paid. So dance studios are not always nonprofits, but they're doing the same thing. They're, you know, training and coaching, which is what I think we, why we make those allowances for some of those AAU teams. The difference is, the nonprofit status, I think, is where the divide was at, and I'm not sure that being a nonprofit or not is just the reason for allowing such a discount. Does that make sense at all?
When you say we make, there are large use right now, but provisions basically for, like athletic teams, it would really just, what are you referring to there?
Well, when you talk, when we, we've always worked with Optimist, we've worked with, I think, several of the AAU baseball teams, basketball teams, and I think even volleyball teams to hold a, to give them a, not just a, not a reduced rate, but that cap rate.
Yeah, that seasonal rate.
Seasonal rate, which means that they pay $7.50 whether they have five games or 10 games in a facility.
Because they're government-supported, yeah.
Yeah.
Because our commissioner...
Is that, does that apply just to the government-supported ones?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. But then, but then those athletics that have a nonprofit status get the reduced rate?
They get the Category 2, yes, ma'am, based on...
Based on the nonprofit status.
At $15 an hour, yeah, nonprofit $15 an hour versus the seasonal rate. So a good example would be Optimist, and when Lincoln, Optimist uses the gym at Lincoln High and Battleground to practice, they're charged a seasonal rate because the commissioners support that Optimist group.
Correct.
And they don't take admission, or if they do, it's very minimal, and they make concession money. Versus the Denver Dragons, when they host a tournament, their nonprofit status and their charging admission, so they're charged the $15 an hour for the gym in that area. Every time they use it, they're not getting the seasonal rate, yeah.
Okay, they are, but $15 an hour is still cheap compared to what a recital is for, you know, for a dance studio.
So this data is on page 6, I think, of our packet under this section.
Of the regulation.
Where it says, "Fee schedule."
Yeah.
Current, it says auditorium, $15 an hour for Category 2, $9 an hour for Category 8. It's what I hear you saying is, you want to take a look at this $90 an hour rate.
I want to try to find some middle ground there, because it's not just the $90 an hour rate. They also, in order to use that, they have to pay the $25 an hour for the custodian, and they have to pay $25 an hour for someone to run lights and sound.
Okay. And that is pretty much, I think, that was one of the revisions that we've made in the recent years, is that piece, because, one, we had to talk about the funding coming back through our payroll system, and they were paid through IRs instead of getting the cash on hand at the event. And then, two, North really went through a spell of years where they had either some kids working those baby booth, or a random, you know, adult, and because of the money we've invested in that sound and stage, that North really wants to manage it with a handful of select people to do those performances. So again, that kind of, yes, the 25, though, remember, covers our cost for our benefits, our social security, all that kind of stuff that we have to do, contribution, plus a fee for their hourly rate.
And that, but we had one dance studio that, in the conversation with six different dance studios that I was having, reported that their sound and light person fell asleep during rehearsal.
Well, they're paying $130, basically, is what we're saying, 90, 25, 25. Is that what they ended up paying?
It's, yeah, so they'll pay $9 an hour to rent the facility, plus 25 for the custodian and 25 for the AV person. So I get what you say, Ms. Davis, on that situation, but I think...
But really, $140 an hour.
Yes, ma'am, that's what Tony would say.
Yeah.
But I do think, having a few people running that sound, I think you're right in saying that that's what happened in that, certainly in the storage, she wants me to address, but having just some select people running our sound system, it's a bit of a...
Totally agree with that part, totally agree with that part, because, you know, we do the same thing at the Cultural Center. You know, if you don't have a qualified person in there, you could end up replacing your entire sound system. You know, we'll look at, okay, $140 an hour, if you've got to have, you know, if you have to have a rehearsal, sometimes that's a six-hour rehearsal, and then, I mean, and that's, you only have to have one night of rehearsals. And then, when you get in and you have, you know, a four to five-hour event, think about how costly that is coming out of a, I don't know, out of a budget. I just want to make, to make some concession. I don't know what can be done, but I would, I'd like to have some...
Are they charging admission?
Typically, for a recital, they do not charge an admission.
For competition, they would, yeah.
For a competition, I'm not sure how many competitions you can hold in that size.
Yeah.
Could I make a suggestion and say, since we've got all the facilities closed, we're going to have about 55 next month with the documents where people have signed up, correct, seeing the kind of hours that they did, go back, pull the original quit for the last couple of years, because that way we can really look at it and see the hours or maybe how the cost break down is. That way we can really make more than education decisions.
Oh, yeah. So I've got, just to, so with you, with what you said there, a good example is if you go to the Extreme Edge Dance Studio at North Lincoln. Their facility rentals for two days, so that one, I pulled that mark, thinking you would ask, somebody would ask that question, from the facility piece itself, for a four to nine, for five hours a day. And see, the difference there is, and that's in the area, they ask for the auditorium and additional classroom space, because they're using the auditorium and the dressing rooms backstage, but they also requested an additional classroom on that arts wing, so the band or chorus room, or the art room would be that additional space. And so that is an additional cost as well. So it's not just auditorium, when they ask for additional areas, they're going to have that additional cost, because by the policy, we can actually rent for a classroom. When we've had a church use, our school, they rented a classroom and auditorium at Union, and we charged them accordingly for both of those. So in that idea, she spent almost $2,000 just in the facility itself, between the auditorium and the classroom rental space, for a total of 22 hours, and then...
Most of the dance studios, and hers in particular, would probably have at a recital at least 60 to 80, probably, dance student, desk, dance students.
Yeah. And then, the same amount of time, the 22 hours of employee cost equaled about $2,500 between the AV and the custodian cost of 25 an hour. So the majority, she spent more in people cost than the facility cost.
But Mark, can I hear you ask for the breakdown per rental...
All of these different ones.
Yeah.
That way we're actually looking at what the cost...
In fact, the totals here, it needs to give you an example of blood, but that's what you're looking for.
Yes, ma'am. If they were doing, you look at it, and there were a free market here, if you look at it, what the cost is, the rest of five hours, I'd just like to see how it breaks down, because you've got five hours on a facility of $90, which is not $450. And if you compare that to what the Citizen Center rental is, or Cultural Center, or whoever...
The school system doesn't pay anything, oh, you mean for the, it's much cheaper for these, for these places, but it's not available. It hasn't been available. Let's just say it hasn't been available. The court system is using, is using the Citizen Center right now.
Court supply.
So they're $650 for hours.
Well, I agree, I think, you know, you guys worked a long time on this policy, and so we don't want to rush anything, but I think we did any compensation, and bring that stuff back. So I want you to motion the table list next month, and if you need a discussion.
Ms. Davis, I had Kathy Gates pull the, I guess, the working documents from 2013, when y'all originally discussed this and changed it.
Yes.
I think it'd be helpful to pull all those supporting documents from back then, because even then, it showed surrounding counties of what they were charging at the time for their facility and their people. I can include that in the packet for the full board to review again.
I think that would be good, but again, I'm sure that those, that those documents do not take into consideration the fact that I stated, and that being, that some of these studios possess our future cheerleaders and our future dance teams. So I just want us to take local, that local, and I was part of that discussion, and just keep in mind, I was one of many. And I do agree that our facilities need to be, we need to charge in order to keep those facilities updated, but I appreciate Ms. Ron's motion to table it so that we can come back and have that discussion, but yes, anything that we had in the past, Erin, is fine. Just know it's a new day.
That concludes the Policy Committee. There is a need to go on to close session, 143, 318. Oh, God, I thought he seconded it.
I'll second.
Right, that'll conclude the Policy Committee. So now there is a need to go on to close session, 143, 318, 11A, 6 for personnel. I want to entertain a motion. Second. All clear. Now, in closed session.
So we can take off back to the front.
So we can take off about ten minutes. So we can take off about ten minutes.
We're good? Motion to approve the personnel.
Make a motion to approve personnel.
All in favor? That concludes our meeting. Can I have?
No, I know.
Well, sorry.
I know.
Okay.
Got tomorrow and Steve-